You got everybody except for Terry? Yep. All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to reconvene our open session. And I'd like to ask trustee Prendergast to report out actions taken in closed session.
Certainly. On a six to zero vote with trustee Witt absent, the board approved a settlement agreement in the amount of $25,000 to a full-time faculty member at Saddleback College.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have the invocation led by trustee Lang, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Milchker.
We are thankful for the opportunity to meet as partners with other invested individuals to carry out our responsibility on behalf of our community to enable this community college district and the institutions that comprise it to fulfill the potential of providing the best possible education to our students while also serving as an economic engine for all of the citizens of this great county, while enriching the lives of those we have the good fortune of assisting. Grant us the wisdom of actively listening to those who provide us with good counsel that we may render the best possible decisions for the best possible reasons. We welcome our new chancellor, Kathleen Burke, and extend her our genuine good wishes that we will work well together and towards the continuous improvement and advancement of this institution. We are thankful for all of the talented people that comprise the chancellor's administrative team and all of the classified employees and managers, faculties, and others that have made this district successful to date and will continue to do so as we move forward. Finally, we extend our thanks to all those individuals who comprise other public agencies and other governmental organizations, including the military, the police, firemen, and others that provide critical and dedicated services that we all enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me while we say the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Are there any requests for public comments? Seeing none, now move on to board reports. Let's start with trustee Wright.
My report is not going to be very long tonight. I just wanted to, again, it's a pleasure to welcome Dr. Kathleen F. Burke as our new chancellor. We're very glad to have her. I had the chance to meet with her on the 5th of July, and we had a wonderful discussion. I also wanted to applaud both of the colleges for their reports. In fact, I want to talk for just a minute about something in the report from IVC. They're having their fourth annual Laser Week, and I think that's a great thing that they do at Irvine Valley College. They host its, they're going to host its fourth annual Laser Week in the Live Oak Canyon Terrace to provide students with the opportunity to explore all the Irvine Valley College, what all that Irvine Valley College has to offer before the start of a fall semester. I think this is a great tradition. And then finally, I want to congratulate the auto technology department at Saddleback College. They, they had a evaluation. The evaluator's assessment was highly positive, stating that in the 10 years that I have been evaluating educational automotive training institutions, private and public, this is the first program that I could not find anything wrong to provide recommendations. And I applaud them for that, particularly Cliff Myers and all his people.
Thank you very much. Trustee Prendergast.
Yes. Just again, formally welcome student trustee Evelyn. Thank you for your first meeting, is it? Second one? You were missed at the last one. And then welcoming chancellor Burke for stepping right in again, and we had a wonderful meeting in your office. I appreciated the time you gave to, I believe, each of the trustees to meet with you, and that was very nice. I am going to unfortunately miss professional development weeks again, and all the wonderful chancellor opening sessions and president opening sessions because I'll be teaching that week. So the timing is just the way it is these days. But I will wish you great success on your presentations, and I hope to hear great things about them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I also welcome chancellor Kathleen Burke, and I think it was a really good idea for her to meet with all the trustees. And when, at our meeting in her office, we discussed my goals of the district, and I'm sure she asked all the other trustees their goals for the districts and the colleges and ATEP, and what our dreams and beliefs are about what we would like to see the district look like in another four years, five years, 10 years, 20 years. So it was a very good meeting, and I hope to continue these meetings because I thought it was very worthwhile. I also went to the 2018 State of the South County luncheon at the Ocean Institute in Dana Point. I listened to a webinar on my computer of the Student Success Funding Formula put on by the Campaign for College Opportunity, and this webinar is still on their website, and I'll be happy to send it to anyone that would like to listen to it. There'll be some interesting things about our funding formula on it. And I thought I'd mention that the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force is now being run by the Coast Community College District this year, and the meetings will all be held at the Coast Community College District Office, and they're going to be from 2:00 to 4:00 on the second Thursday of each month. And let me know or let one of us know if there's an issue, a legislative issue, that you'd like the task force to take on for one of their tasks for this year, because we really do a lot of successful lobbying for what we believe in for our wonderful community colleges. And I'm looking forward to our two faculty professional development weeks at both colleges, one at Irvine Valley and one at Saddleback. That's an opportunity for the trustees and for everyone, for the faculty, to get some training and to hear both college professors and the chancellor hear their dreams and wishes for the colleges and the districts for the upcoming semester. And don't forget to save the date for the Saddleback College Celebration of 50 Years on September 24th. They're having a barbecue from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Saddleback College Quad, and they're going to try to work with a lot of students and have a lot of students participate in this 50-year celebration. It should be a wonderful celebration. Thanks.
Thank you. I too want to welcome Kathleen Burke to the district. We're glad that you're here. It was a long process to get to this point and know that you're going to have the support of the board to help you succeed, because if you succeed, then we succeed as well. It's been a challenging couple of weeks for me, and I think some of you know, my mother passed away, and I really appreciate the words of condolences from many of you. I really do. She was, she was genuinely a kind person, and the response reminded me there's a lot of kindness here, too, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
I too want to welcome you. So glad to have you here with us, and we have a wonderful board, and we're just so welcome, welcome, welcome. I hope you've all had time for a vacation this summer. It's now, it's not long before the Faculty Professional Development Week. It seems like it's just around the corner. I got to go with the family back to my husband's home state of Vermont. I visited UVM, that's the University of Vermont, where he got his bachelor's degree and his master's degree. I visited the admissions office to find out about the tuition costs. The tuition per year for in-state, for in Vermont, is $15,504. Out-of-state, $39,120. And on top of this, there is a comprehensive student fee for $2,236. This does not include room and board, books, or supplies. I was shocked, and after I went to that office, I really appreciated the California Community College system, serving as a trustee in our foundations and how important they are to our students. I then found an article here, and when I was on the trip, in the USA Today, it's July 16, 2018, where the parents can take on their children's student loan debt after the students have maxed out on a loan. Since students aren't the only ones crushed by loan debt, parents can fill the gap when the kids can't borrow more. This kind of got to me. Okay, different subject. On Friday, August 27th, I attended the IVC Foundation Annual Board Retreat at ATEP. A big thank you is in order for Betty Jo Woollett, who did a fantastic job as the president last year, and a welcome for our new foundation president, Lisa Greenberg. Last year, the IVC Foundation raised about $1,300,000 for the student scholarships. The IVC Foundation is now fully staffed with four employees paid for by the college. Talking about foundations, I got a thank you note here from the Dr. William Bill J. Memorial Scholarship at Saddleback College. The scholarship helped her, she told me in her thank you note, for the year's parking permit, material fees for classes, membership in the online nursing resources, nursing textbooks, and membership for the 2019 California Student Nursing Association. This shows these extra costs that students have and how important our foundations are with their scholarships to help the students.
Thank you, trustee Jay. Trustee Lang.
You'll hear presentations tonight to determine how we, as a community college district, will be accountable under new state legislation for fulfilling our responsibilities to make sure we have the programs in place suitable for the students we serve, to educate our students in a timely and efficient manner, to create and achieve their academic goals, and move from our institutions to other educational institutions, in the case of transfer students, into businesses and employment opportunities in other cases. I believe we should welcome the opportunity for such accountability for us and other educational institutions, and we expect that some portion of our college's educational funding under revised state models will be dependent on achieving certain accountability standards. Our citizens and taxpayers through our elected representatives should demand that precious taxpayer dollars are efficiently spent to achieve the promise of higher education, which comprises such a large portion of the state budget. I personally believe that as a result of the combination of the investment in technology and the dedicated effort on the part of individuals in our two colleges, we offer the kind of customized experience that benefits our students to achieve their academic goals and provide them with the best potential outcomes possible from enrollment in our district. However, I will voice my concern about the weighting of a portion of the funding received on ultimate personal student outcomes, to the extent that a student's personal responsibility or lack thereof for achieving desired outcomes may be at the root of failure that is left at the institution's doorstep. Yes, it's up to us to try our hardest to motivate students, an effort that is at the very heart of the profession, but student outcomes are still a function of student personal motivations and efforts, which in turn may be influenced by maturity, environment, and similar factors. Only time will tell how this new effort will play out, and certainly much will be learned in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee Hong.
I'd also like to congratulate chancellor Kathleen Burke, and I look forward to learning from your guidance later this year. I'd also like to apologize for my absence at the last meeting and any inconveniences that may have come with that. And as for my updates, going back two months, on June 6th, that's when I first introduced to the Saddleback president Perry, as well as their director of student life, Chris Handgrave. And we talked about specifically how ASG in Saddleback is structured very differently from ASG for IVC and how they can best be implemented to support each other. I later met with Perry on June 18th to further discuss how exactly student leaders are elected, specifically the student trustee, and how that can be progressed in the future, as well as the possibility of an ASIBC Sustainability Council, which I know that Saddleback has, and a lot of ASIBC student leaders have expressed a lot of interest in as well. On June 6th, I met with Kay Riles, who is the Honors Program Director at IVC, and she specifically called a meeting with me to talk about, well, we'll have a presentation about later, which is AB 705, which I will talk further about later, her being an English professor herself and all. Most recently, I met on July 22nd with Matt and Perry, in which we talked about the overall changes they'd both like to make to both schools, and specifically about the problems that each face. So currently, Saddleback, Perry talked to me about their homelessness issue that they have and how he's working to combat that. And me and Matt were talking about how IVC recently implemented a food bank, because I know that our school specifically had a food insecurity problem. And because both of our schools, Perry with homelessness and Matt with food insecurity, we realized those are kind of intermingled. You know, if you have a problem with homelessness, you probably have a problem with food insecurity. So we were talking about how if each campus is combating one of those, how we can integrate to make our overall homelessness and food insecurity problems better.
Thank you very much. All right. So I think we're on to chancellor's report.
Thank you. I've spent the last 30 days continuing to familiarize myself with the district, in addition to touring the ATEP and meeting with representatives from Congresswoman Mimi Rogers.
Mimi Walters.
Mimi Walters, sorry. Mimi Walters' staff. I attended the first Los Angeles Orange County Regional Consortium Executive Board Meeting on July 19th on behalf of the district. I attended the Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Initiative Advisory Board Meeting in Sacramento on July 26th. I continue to serve on that board. I was on that board before working for the district. And finally, I'd like to thank everybody that I've met, all the board members, all of the staff members, for all of your support these first 30 days, and for the very, very warm welcome that everybody has extended to me. I'm very happy to be here with you all.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again, and welcome to the team. Let's move on to college presidents' reports. Irvine Valley College.
Okay. Thank you, President Jamal. Mine will be short. I too want to welcome our new chancellor, Kathleen Burke. And to say that, I've been approached by so many of our CEO colleagues that tell me how lucky we are that you are here, and I truly believe that from our work so far, and really look forward to our future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. And in Jim Bice's place, I think we have Juan Avalos.
Yes. Juan Avalos, Vice President of Student Services. Pleasure meeting you, and I also extend a warm welcome from Saddleback. We look forward to working with you. A couple of things I want to share, I think at a previous meeting, we talked about the launching of our new Promise Program for Saddleback, so we firmed up those numbers. We're looking at 262 students who will be entering this fall. What I like about our program, I think is a nice blending of what you talked about, board member Lang, where there's a combination, where there's a commitment from the college and there's an accountability element for students, where we're incentivizing the support that we provide and require milestones to be met in order to continue, offering students the opportunity to have reduced expenses over the next couple of years, and so we're very excited about the launching of it. We have a signature meet and greet on August 6th, 6 o'clock. The primary goal of that is for these students to come together, get to know one another, and begin to build community. Another element of that that's part of our design is we have a success coach that will work with them, be the point person to all things intervention. We have a case management team behind that as well. So this event on August 6th is going to be an opportunity for them to kind of see how magnificent a program it is and for them to launch in that. The two other items that I want to speak to are in the report. Any opportunity we have to test, litmus test for our excellence usually comes in one of two forms, right? It has come in the form of external accreditation, folks coming in, telling us, sharing their expertise and letting us know the excellence that they see. The other one is when there's, when our students at the two-year college level compete with those at four-year level and compete very well. And so two items. One is our math students who competed in the American Statistical Association Data Fest. Some of the kind of large universities that were part of that competition were UCLA, UCI, and Cal Poly Pomona. This is the first year that community college students were invited to compete, and we were very proud of our showing at that one. The second one trustee Jim Wright already spoke to regarding the automotive technology. Once again, an opportunity to showcase stellar programs, and very proud of those as well. We have some upcoming events in Professional Development Week, President's Faculty Breakfast on Wednesday, August 15th at 7:45 a.m., and then President's Part-Time Faculty Dinner, August 16th, 4:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for that. On to associated student government reports. Who's going to go first?
So we're excited again to continue with our move to the C-100 building. We have staff and students underway, preparing the final preparations and refurbishments, and we're currently on schedule to be there in the fall. Also, I attended the Strategic Planning and Accreditation Council, and the IVC Foundation retreats this past two weeks or so, on July 11th and July 27th respectively. There we set goals, talked about what's ideal in a board member, and set a plan of action for the coming year ahead. Also, we are hoping to introduce more comprehensive guidelines for use of ASG's budget allocations. We're hoping to implement an orientation to departments who receive our funds to know about the limitations of IVC funding, ASIBC funding, and guidelines for the spending. And with that, we will also try to introduce more specific bylaws to have it in writing as well. We're also excited to plan our new training coming this summer and the beginning of August. Students will be engaging in cultural competency training, as well as goal setting for ASG, and we're looking forward to another fruitful year ahead, and again, working with Saddleback as well. As trustee Huang mentioned, we've been in contact with one another, talking about the issues pressing both campuses, hoping to possibly introduce stipends for ASG directors, and we're also hoping to find a plan of action against food insecurities and homelessness affecting both campuses.
Thank you. Saddleback College.
Hello, trustees. My apologies for missing the last meeting. I was homesick and had to recover. But for Saddleback ASG, we are right now planning with the Pre-Law Society a candidate forum that will be held in McKinney Theater on September 26th, in which we are in contact with congressional candidates and even reaching out to governor candidates, such as Gavin Newsom, and to get them down here for a candidate forum. And we have also been continuously talking with IVC's Associated Student Government, as Matt mentioned, on the idea of getting stipends for members on ASG, because as we have come to discover, especially over the years, it is hard to have members on ASG that have lives and full-time jobs and to be able for them to commit the time needed when it is so expensive to live here and they have to work jobs. So we are working on trying to find a solution to how we can maybe receive stipends, and there's different ways that we are currently looking into that. We are working our welcome week at Saddleback College, and then a large voter registration drive that we are working with some outside organizations on, and doing training for our members on ASG to teach them how to register people to vote. We are also still appointing members to ASG and are planning our retreat for August 17th, in which we will train members about Robert's Rules and how ASG functions, and then develop goals for the year. And that is, that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Welcome back. All right. So we're on to board requests for reports. Do we have any board requests for supports?
Yes.
And I think we do. Trustee Jay.
I attended the IVC Foundation Retreat last week. Among other things, I found that the IVC Foundation has four staff position. The fourth one is being voted on tonight's agenda, all of which are directly funded by the college itself, with all donations going to student aid. I want a report on how the comparable staff positions within the Saddleback College Foundation are funded. It's my understanding that Saddleback's model is different. With part of the five-person staff being funded, with part of the five-person staff being funded through the college, two, are only two positions, and part with the donated foundation funds are three positions. If this is correct, we need to look into the difference in the funding between the college foundations with the idea of establishing a single model for both colleges in the district. The foundation fundraising purposes is to assist students. I have been, I've understood that donors and potential donors expect their funds to go for direct aid to the students, and they are less likely to donate if their funds are going towards the staff salary. Whichever model is chosen, it seems to me it should be the same for both colleges. So I would like a report on this.
Okay. All right. So we do have a board request for report. Do we have a motion to approve this report?
So.
Motion from trustee Milchker?
I second it.
We have a motion from trustee Milchker. Is there a second?
For me.
I will second it. First time I've done that. All right. Any other further discussion on this? Questions? All right. Go ahead.
So I understand that the report, my concern is the outcome to standardize it when, in so many other cases, we've been okay that Saddleback and IVC do things differently. And I think it's kind of, I don't know if it's our purview to tell the foundations how to operate or not, so that concerns me a little bit. I'm not saying I'm against it or anything, I just want a little more clarification on...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe this is only to approve the report, not any potential... I believe this is only to approve the report, not any potential outcome from the report.
Right.
Which would require further, you know, board action item and discussion on part of the report.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think you're right. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have a motion carries, six trustee yes votes, one trustee abstention, and student advisory, student trustee yes vote. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to our discussion items. We have two discussion items, both related to board requests for reports. 4.1, Saddleback College and IVC report on AB 705. I think we're going to have a presentation. Are they going to be separate or joined together? Okay. And then the second one on dual early college, dual enrollment, and state initiatives. And they're going to be together.
So we'll, we'll go ahead. We'll go ahead and get started. My name is Dr. Angel Hernandez. I'm an Irvine Valley College counselor and basic skills coordinator.
Hello, I'm Dr. Jennifer Klein. I'm the Director of Research, Planning, and Accreditation at Saddleback College.
And we're here today to provide an overview on the college's plans to implement AB 705. And really, the intent of AB 705 is to provide the colleges with an opportunity to better serve our students.
So we'll go ahead and get started. Okay, so AB 705 is an amendment to the Seymour Campbell Student Success Act of 2012. The 2012 Student Success Act had the intent of bringing a college and a student into alignment, so that students could achieve their goals by completing the courses that they need. Recall that the Student Success Act upped the ante on funding so that we would optimize services to students. Assessment, orientation, follow-up, advising, counseling, educational planning, and referrals for students, as well as those that needed special services. A large focus of the Success Act was for services like matriculation and counseling, in with the intent to help students finish the coursework that they needed. But the extent data in the state illustrates that 74% of students in the California community college system are placing into basic skills courses. And so what happens to these students? Well, in California, 15% of the students starting out in basic skills make it to transfer level. And that is true for both colleges. Just like across the state, very low levels. At Saddleback, only 8% of our students that are, start out in remedial math, move into transfer level work. Only 22% of students starting out in remedial English move into transfer level work. In September, I, along with my colleague at Irvine Valley, will present again the scorecard data for you. Last time we presented this data, the numbers were flat year over year. No changes, very low success rates. All of these lackluster success outcomes are further compounded by climbing expenditures at the state. In 2015, 2016, the LAO budget report indicated upward of $400 million spent for basic skills via apportionment funding based on the FTS we serve. Then in 2016, our state gave an additional $60 million to colleges to transform basic skills through the Basic Skills Student Outcomes Transformational Grant. That grant we talked about in the written report that you got. Both colleges put full effort into this. The BSOT grant, that's what we call it, is the foundation to lay the way for AB 705. Given that our enrollment base is vital to the college, it is imperative that we implement this mandated structure for AB 705. It is proven by research to improve retention and success by ramping our students up to being college-ready. After all, the intent of AB 705 is to maximize a student's probability for success and complete transfer level math and English within one year. And so the same for ESL students to complete their transfer level English requirements within three years.
When we're looking at AB 705, two of the key areas are the changes that are happening because of 705, for the assessment process, and then also the curriculum. I'm going to go ahead and provide a general overview on both of those components. When we're looking at the impact of 705 on assessment, it mandates that community colleges no longer require assessment exams for placement in math and English, starting fall 2018, and for ESL in fall 2019. Okay, so that's one of the key changes that we're seeing. What is being utilized in place of the assessment exam? It's the multiple measures that you see here. High school transcript information, self-reported high school information, and also guided selfplacement components. Now, why the shift from the assessment exam to primarily looking at high school GPA as a prime indicator, right? The body of research that Jennifer referenced earlier, when we're looking at the overall process of how students are doing in our college courses, has found that high school GPA is a higher predictor of success in college coursework than assessment exams. That's a key component of why the shift over to primarily looking at high school coursework, if you will. So that's one of the key components. In preparation for this, so even though AB 705 is a newer bill, we at the colleges had an idea that we were moving this way. At different levels, we started in fall 2016 to utilize high school transcript information as part of our placement process. At that point, we utilize the high school transcript information in combination with our assessment exam, and utilize whichever tool, the assessment exam or the high school GPA information placed a student higher. That's known as a disjunctive placement model, if you will. So we started a pilot for this, and we've seen some really positive data with regards to the increased numbers of students going directly into transfer level. With that said, the next shift is to no longer requiring the assessment exam. In preparation for that, this past April, Saddleback stopped requiring the assessment exam, and IVC will be doing the same this upcoming September. So now, as we're looking at that, what are we replacing that with? I talked already about the high school GPA information. Now, we know the majority of our students do have that information, but we also have to account for students that may not have that information. AB 705 also allows colleges to utilize a process known as guided selfplacement. What the process of guided selfplacement is, is as a student is going through the enrollment process, it asks the students a series of questions about their preparation prior to coming to the college, to allow the student to self-assess what course they want to start at. With the idea being that the lowest that they can start at is transfer level. So now that we're shifting to that post-705 component, is since the assessment isn't required, primarily we'll use the high school GPA information or the self-guided placement process. Okay?
Are we no longer going to be offering remedial classes at Saddleback and Irvine Valley College?
Great question. So we are still going to offer it when we're looking at that for students that self-select into below-transfer courses. Now, we do know, and I'll say that myself as a counselor, that a student based on their respective ed goal might decide that, hey, for me, I'm looking at a non-transfer associate degree. To me, I don't need a transfer level math class, if you will. So we will still offer below-transfer coursework, but with the intent of for students whose respective goal is not transfer. For students who's their primary goal is transfer, 705 entitles the students to start at that transfer level, if you will.
At Saddleback, we are saying, let's see where the data is. We're going to do demand-based scheduling, and it's really open for discussion, frankly. The state wants us to get rid of remediation, to be honest with you. I think that they're going to push for that through the second wave, so we kind of have to be ready for that. But right now, we do have students, to Angel's point, we do have students saying, you know, I would prefer to be in basic skills. So it's up for discussion, to be totally honest, at Saddleback, excuse me.
And that's one of the things, just to add to that point, that as we've been piloting this process, if you will, we do have students say, great, I, you know, want to jump right into transfer level. We do also have, as we've been doing the pilot, students that decide to self-select lower, right, into below-transfer as well. The second component, so you hear a lot of 705 really focused on the assessment piece. The second piece to me that is as critical is what does the curriculum look like that we're then placing these students into, right? A critical component of what we're doing. So if we're no longer requiring remedial math, how are these students, that used to be served by remedial math and English, going to be served? So the pedagogy that the basic skills faculty, and when I say basic skills faculty, I'm referring to English, ESL, and math, are utilizing to really innovate their curriculum, is what's known as acceleration pedagogy and corequisite support. Really, the concept of corequisite support is where a student that would have previously placed two levels below transfer will now take that transfer course, but at the same time they're taking that transfer course, they're taking a two-unit co-rec support class that's intended to really drill down on the concepts that a student needs in order to be successful in that corresponding transfer level course. Now, to me, as an educator, this is one of the exciting innovative practices that I see coming out of this. Because when we look at the corequisite models, at IVC, the faculty that's teaching the co-rec course is going to be the same faculty that's teaching the primary transfer course. In the pilot that we've done so far in English, the co-rec course is held right after the core English course. So it provides more time for the faculty to work directly with the student in a classroom setting, and it also provides a little bit more, if you will, of a cohort model, right, for the students going through that, to really spend some more time together. So we've been piloting some of that curriculum on the English side. For both Saddleback and IVC, the math faculty over the summer has been developing their corequisite curriculum for their transfer level courses such as statistics, trigonometry, college algebra, with the idea that that curriculum will be ready by fall 19. So we know a large majority of students will be able to do our standalone transfer courses, but really key is how are we supporting those students that need that extra support? It's through the corequisite model, okay? And again, some of this research that we're seeing is really saying that when we look at our developmental ed sequences, the students are more likely to get, for students whose goal is to transfer, they're more likely to achieve that goal by starting in transfer, as long as colleges, we're building the appropriate supports in, right? So that's a big paradigm shift that we're seeing with 705.
Thank you, Angel. So Angel is right on. If you recall, this is our Guided Pathways book for both colleges, Redesigning America's Community Colleges, Thomas Bailey, Shanna Smith, Jaggers, and Davis Jenkins. These are researchers that have done tons of research across the state about best practices. In this book, they talk about corequisits as being the ultimate game changer to get students to be college-ready. This is why, without any doubt, our state is going ahead and saying, if your students aren't college-ready, go ahead and offer a corequisite. That's where this has come from, tons of research. As far as the implementation goes, colleges have to be fully compliant with the proposed changes of AB 705, as Angel stated, by fall 2019 for math and English, and then by fall 2020 for ESL. And while much of this transformational groundwork has been laid, we cannot move forward in a seamless fashion without our district IT team. Under the leadership of Gurlie Jeltima, the district IT AB 705 design team aims to help scale and automate systems that behave in alignment with policy. So what this means is ensuring that all of our front and backend technology is optimally set up for ongoing operations, so that students get the courses they need and supports when they need it. And then at the college level, this work is being done through various collaborative structures. So IVC is implementing AB 705 through its Basic Skills Work Group and its Triple SP Task Force, and at Saddleback, AB 705 is being implemented through its Student Success College-wide Coordinating Committee and the AB 705 Work Group. So just as a little temperature check in terms of implementation, this is what's happening right for fall 2018. The English ramp-up-to-transfer solution is ready at both colleges, okay? So the transfer level and the corequisite, the solution is done. We haven't gone to full scale, but that's what we're doing. So we're looking at this as an assessment iterative process. Also during fall, we're developing math curriculum and corequisits, and then we're having the discussions with, from both colleges about ESL. So what this means at IVC is the work kicks off with curriculum development. And then at Saddleback, we have some non-credit ESL and credit ESL, and so we're bringing that all together and having a conversation about the curriculum. And then ultimately, this will lead to a shared solution for both colleges on ESL guided selfplacement by fall 2020. So what all of this means is collaborative, 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 right? So we want to make sure that we're working very collaboratively across the colleges and with the district, and the ultimate goal is student support. And we're working collaboratively at many levels to ensure that math and English faculty are giving students support they need. And tutoring is always available. It has always been available. And using district technology that we've had in place, we're really going to ramp this up and be tracing feedback from instructors on all of these students' attendance, assignments, grades, and as good of real time as we possibly can, so that we can make sure that when there's hiccups, we can triage the students to the right place in the right time. And most importantly, we continue to provide extensive professional development to our faculty and pedagogy to implement these required changes. This is very important to us.
So just as we're looking at that, I think a key component that was mentioned again is the professional development process. So when we look at the pedagogy that faculty is utilizing to work with students that will now be in transfer level right away, that maybe previously weren't. As was mentioned, the professional development component is key. I know Saddleback already has a series of professional development for faculty planned. At Irvine Valley College, our faculty has been participating in the California Acceleration Project Professional Development for faculty throughout the community colleges, which really focuses on how will faculty be prepared to meet the needs, the varying needs of students that'll be in transfer level. Another example that you see here is utilizing the progress report tools that we have our different colleges. Also, as a counselor at IVC, who's also a basic skills coordinator, AB 705 is continuing to prompt us to have conversations across our respective areas. Yes, it's driven by what's happening in the classroom, but as I'm working with my colleagues in English or in math or in ESL, I'm now having, as 705 being the basis for that conversation of, hey, that's how you're supporting the student in the classroom, how can we support the student outside of the classroom? So I think that's some of the exciting dialogue that's happening because of 705 and the changes that are coming with it.
And now we'll open for questions.
All righty, thank you two very much for that well-prepared presentation. And it looks like we have trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, the corequisite, I understand that very well-meaning. How, you mentioned that it's a person who is probably two levels below, but without a placement test and going solely on, I'm just curious, is it professor-driven, student-driven, kind of a combination to figure out who needs to be in that class? Is it volunteer? Is it required? Just a little bit more understanding on that.
Definitely. It's a really good question. So as part of that process, we are, both colleges are utilizing what's known as a multiple measures assessment process, MMAP GPA Guidelines, which is a body of research across the state of California that looked at high school coursework and predictability for success in transfer level. So within the MMAP placement grid, there's different GPA thresholds. For example, let me use English as an example. Within the English GPA cutoffs that are based on research by MMAP, students with a grade point average, a cumulative final grade point, high school grade point average of a 2.6 or below would be recommended to do the corequisite model. So if you will, to answer your question, we're utilizing those GPA cutoffs as a point of reference to make the recommendations for students that would be better served by a co-rec.
Total GPA or GPA in the English courses?
Total cumulative GPA. For English. And then on the math side, it's a combination of course, math course completed, and final GPA.
So in high school, there's graduation requirement, and then there's obviously A through G for four-year institutions. So in high school, there's, there's graduation requirement and then there's obviously A through G for, for four-year institutions. So, and those are very different in the level of math that a student's expected to take. So where are we at in that?
So within that, the intent of how the, the MMAP guidelines were developed was a GPA over a timeframe of four years, right? So the, uh, GPA would be able to measure the effort that a student is putting into their studies, right? Over not just one semester, but over a four-year, um, timeline. So with those GPAs at the end of that four-year process would be, hey, that would give us more of an indicator of the likelihood that a student will be successful in a college-level course.
All right. Thank you for that. Trustee Wright.
I noticed one of you, uh, I want to thank both of you for this presentation. I'm the one that asked for it because I, I was very concerned about the 705 when I read about it and what they were asking you to do. So thank you for the presentation. Uh, I have two, two questions I'd like to ask. One is I know at Saddleback, you're now using high school transcripts. And instead of having 70% of the students, uh, going to basic skills, you're only going to have about 30% going to basic skills. So in other words, and I know that the basic skills class, like, uh, beginning algebra and intermediate algebra, they're all five-unit classes. They bring in a lot of money, or what we call FTES. What, what are we going to do? Are we going to offer more transfer-level classes to make up for this or, or what?
I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that question. Um, so yes, the intent is to offer more transfer-level math with the best, uh, practice of using the corequisite.
Right.
Um, I want to show you a little bit of data or talk to you about a little bit of data from Gross, Mount Carmichaela. That is, um, in South, uh, San Diego County.
Right.
They are a very, very early adopter of this, um, trailblazer really. And thank God for them because we, uh, we have benefited from seeing their data. So just an example, a student that was two levels below transfer-level math before AB 705, their likelihood of getting to transfer-level math, 19% after, 70%. Huge. Now, your question, what did this do to enrollments? Okay, snapshot of math enrollments. 2013, fall 2013, 2105. Fall 2017, 3141. That's a 51% increase. I think knowing that our bread and butter enrollments are in math and English.
Right.
This could be huge for us. We are spending a lot of time doing forecasting of our sections. Like I said before, demand-based scheduling, we're taking this very, very seriously. We're looking at how to optimize our sections, being very sophisticated about it. And that is what fall 2018 for us is about too. It's, it's curriculum design, but we don't want to get this wrong and we don't want to close the door to our students.
The other question that I had, I know that we've got some veterans coming back who've been out of high school for a number of years. And you said that, that basic, that the basic skill math will probably be going away. We've got to do something to serve these people. I mean, they've been away from, and we've got other people who are coming back to the community college who've been out of high school for maybe four, five, six years. So I, I, I sort of think that we still are going to have to have some basic skills classes.
Yeah. So go ahead.
And as a counselor, I completely agree with you. And that's where you'll see when we're talking about 705, so it prohibits us from requiring students to take below-transfer-level courses. But within 705 and the guidelines that the state transfer's office provided, it does not restrict us from offering it. Right? And I'll say even as the in-between pilot that, that we've had, uh, you know, I referenced earlier that I have had students that might be returning that have been in the workforce for 10 years or what have you, who I've had the conversation with one-on-one and said, hey, you're eligible for a transfer level. You know, as we kind of assess what's going on with that student, it's been 10 years. I'd rather start at something that it's a, that's a little more low stakes. I want to take the level below. Um, even though we can't require students to do, to take the level below, we will still offer it. What we're defining based off of need is the amount of sections that will be needed.
Right.
Right? But I think by all means, for that example that you have, is exactly why even at the colleges, as we started to dissect the 705 guidelines, was yeah, for that transfer, the student whose primary goal is transfer, maybe they're best served by going directly into transfer. But for a student who might, who's a returning student, you know, starting a level below or what have you, might be the best way to support that student.
And we also will have high school students who have only taken two years of math in high school.
Exactly.
So who's need that. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add really quickly that, um, we, we are definitely considering that approach. One way to kind of do this at Saddleback is sort of like the non-credit, you know, extended ed, play in the sandbox, take the class as many times as you want. Um, we also don't want to ignore the body of research that shows that some of these boot camps don't actually work. Um, just to be honest with you. So the CSU tried math boot camps, remember? And that wasn't really working out. Now they're asking us to help out a little bit more with this AB 705. Um, think about it this way. If you're a student that you don't really know what your ed goal is and you know that remediation doesn't work, then why start in the first place? So there is an argument to be made for just going ahead and ramping that student up to, to transfer level with the corequisite. So we're just keeping all of this in mind and this is the time to, um, experiment and, and see how this works.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'm, I'm just wondering, has, um, AB 705 established any specific goals? Improvement goals or are we doing that internally? Or how does that, uh, how does the whole goal-setting process work, uh, in this context?
Absolutely. So, uh, Loris, uh, and I will see you, we're both the, the research directors at both the colleges. We'll see you in September on the scorecard. The scorecard now has the one-year, um, transfer, uh, level math and English completion rate. Ours has been pretty abysmal. Um, and so, uh, both of our strategic plans have goals to increase that. Uh, we think we're going to increase that dramatically. And, um, through our district-wide, uh, plan, we will definitely be tracking that. And then through our district-wide integrated plan, we're also tracking on it. This is a cornerstone to success. So the particular outcome of one-year completion of a college-level math or English course is central for us. It's, it's a launch point to success.
Well, I haven't heard any specifics there.
Oh, ours, off the top of my head, ooh, um, yeah, I don't know, I don't recall ours right now. That's terrible. But, um, I will get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you. Student trustees Huang.
Hi, um, I had two questions, um, one qualitative, one quantitative. And, uh, starting with quantitative, kind of voicing the, um, the opinions of Kay Riles, who is the honors, um, director and also a writing one professor herself at IVC. Um, when I was talking to her, she was saying that although she sees the benefits in obviously putting, um, more students that don't need to be in those remedial classes, out of those remedial classes, um, as a writing one professor herself and me, like a student that has taken writing one and writing two, um, have you, like, is there any action to implement to hire more teachers or more classrooms? Cause as someone personally that has been on the waiting list and seen like, even given the classes that we have now, um, there's like 30, 40 student, um, student-long waitlist for the classes that we even have right now. And given your plan, I see that there's obviously going to be an influx of students in those, you know, math 10, writing one, like college transfer classes. So are you going to hire more teachers to compensate for the influx of students or?
I would say with regards to hiring, obviously I can, I can't speak to that. But I will say one of the conversations that my colleagues are having at the department level is when you look at the need completely, that we'll have to offer more sections of transfer level, right? So as we transition, let's say faculty that previously only taught basic skills, that some of that faculty will now be teaching, since we're doing less basic skill sections, will then move over to teach that transfer level, if you will. So that's part of the dialogue that's happening this year as we anticipate what the need's going to be in fall 19 is, you know, looking at how we can utilize our current structures of courses that we offer to kind of transition that, right, from basic skills to then offering more of that transfer level. But I think your point is one of the key things that the colleges will look at, you know, as we prepare to, to really implement, um, AB 705.
And, uh, my second question as for, um, more qualitative question. I noticed that earlier you talked about how in the summer, the, I think it was the IVC math teachers, how they were, um, talking about standardizing all their classes so that, um, someone that was self-placing theirself in those transfer-level classes would be able to take like the same difficulty of like math 10 classes, save for statistics. Um, was that the same thing? Cause I'm an English major. Um, would it be the same thing for English? Cause I know for, um, I just took writing two in the spring and I know that speaking to a lot of other student leaders and just students in general, there are, there's a lot of variety with, when it comes to English. And obviously me being an English major too, um, cause for stats, you know, stats is math and that's like pretty standard across the board. But for writing two, I know there's classes that vary from, like me, I had to write a 20-page research paper as opposed to, I have friends who wrote, um, five-page, five-page research papers centered around like Batman comics. And obviously that's like a huge gap between what we have to do. So is there standardization also happening between the writing classes as well as the math classes or is it just math classes?
When you're looking at the type of pedagogy that's used in corequisite supports at IVC, our English faculty are actually the leaders on our campus of utilizing these approaches. So yes, those trainings are going on right now. Um, matter of fact, I was just emailing with our, um, Dr. Sugar, one of our English faculty. She's preparing a pedagogy training for their faculty, actually to be held next week. So, uh, yes, that does occur across the basic skills disciplines. And I will say on my campus that a lot of that has been led by our English faculty. And that's some of the powerful dialogues that I think is happening again across disciplines because of 705. Is how can we all kind of collectively work to better serve our students?
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Milchker.
Okay. I, I, I too have read how, um, if a student is in remedial classes for very long, they really don't graduate. And as you said, the data showed that only 15% of these students graduate. So that, that is certainly data-driven and I guess AB 705 was data-driven. So you're coming, I have several questions too. First of all, I want to thank trustee Wright for asking for this, um, report because I think it's very important for all of us and for the trustees to know and understand this. Cause this is a huge difference in how our students matriculate and the way they'll be giving, offering classes and the way our faculty will be teaching the classes. So I want to thank everybody involved in this very extensive process to be able to, uh, really respond to these mandates by AB 70, 705. Um, I, I wondered two things. One, one, first of all, as, as the student trustee Wong said, uh, scheduling is really important to make sure our students can get their classes. Cause you know, this will be starting very soon. I, I, I think it's the vice president of instruction that, that works with scheduling classes and making sure that these classes are, um, scheduled in a very, uh, student-friendly way. And you could answer that question. And then I want to, want to know if the students get units for the corequisits they're taking with either math or English too. Thank you.
Yes. So I'll address the second question first. When we're looking at the corequisite support models, at IVC, the corequisite support models are all a two-unit base. So across, um, disciplines, as the college looked at, okay, 705 is coming. How are we going to develop this, these co-rec models? What is the thought of what would best serve the students? And they're, okay, well, you know, there was even when we were initially brainstorming, well, hey, I could do a five-unit co-rec model. But again, the dialogue that the discipline faculty had across the different disciplines was, hey, we definitely don't want to place additional burden on the students. So as the basic skills faculty looked at their respective curriculum, they felt that within that two-unit co-rec framework, they could really incorporate the, the key concepts that they need, that a student needs to be successful at transfer level.
Thank you.
Yep.
If you look at the language of AB 705, um, it, it's pretty clear that they don't want us to load up students on additional units for the corequisite. They want us to minimize that. So we're helping the student with just-in-time teaching, right? But we're not overburdening them with too many units and that, that it's actually within the mandate.
Good evening. I'm Tranvokumoto, Vice President of Instruction at Saddleback. To answer the question with regards to our scheduling and impact on scheduling. Uh, the impact to our scheduling for English is very different than our impact to scheduling for math. Um, so for our English curriculum, you'll notice that we've made a huge shift in offering the college-level, um, English course. We've added the corequisite course and are monitoring it to determine the need from our students. Um, we are also, um, evaluating our math. That particular, uh, levels that we are shifting to with regards to the transfer being, um, that point of entry for students and the number of students that will shift over to that versus the remedial courses. Um, we're analyzing that right now. We're studying how it's been impacted at other colleges, as was mentioned. And we'll be making that shift as we plan our schedule for 1920. Um, in addition to those two areas, what we know is that our students are doing English and math and in, um, coordination with all the courses that they're needing in order to transfer or get a degree from us. And so work that we'll be doing this fall under our guided pathways efforts is going to be analyzing all the different paths that students will take and how many of our students will then be able to, will need those English and math courses, um, depending on their major. So again, for English, it's much more, um, prescriptive across all majors, but for math, it's slightly different. And so our analysis will take into account a student who is needing to do calculus versus a student who needs to do statistics. And then amount of math classes we would need to put on schedule depending on the number of students who are majoring in that area. Um, so we are definitely getting more sophisticated in what we put on schedule. It is a learning curve for all of us. Um, we have great tools in place to help us analyze this year so that we can impact our 1920 schedule.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I think that concludes the questions on AB 705. You going to roll into the next one?
No, actually we have another set of presentations for that one. Thank you very much.
Hello. Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay.
We can.
Um, I'm Tracy Fahimi. I'm the dean of social and behavioral sciences and business sciences at Irvine Valley College. And I help, um, facilitate our dual enrollment programs, um, at the college. And this is in response to our request to report on our early college program and how certain state initiatives have impacted it. We wind up slightly to include some other dual enrollment that we do, which are also on the agenda tonight, the C cap agreements. Um, so that we could cover everything at once. Um, dual enrollment occurs, just as background for people who are not familiar with the term, when a K through 12 or special admit student enrolls in a college class. And, um, this term has also, uh, concurrent enrollment is another equivalent term that has been used. Um, after AB 288 was passed a few years ago, um, the state legislature said that dual enrollment and concurrent enrollment will mean the same thing. And that hints forward, the state legislature would be calling concurrent enrollment dual enrollment. But, um, if you've heard the term concurrent enrollment, they are the same. So, um, these courses are college courses and as such, they earn college credit. And sometimes they also earn, um, credit, AG credit, sometimes credit toward high school graduation. It depends on what the high schools choose to do with the courses. And there's a lot of different kinds of dual enrollment that occur at the college. Um, and it would, this would apply to both of our colleges, um, actually Saddleback and IVC. But, um, students can, in an ad hoc fashion, enroll in college classes. They don't need to be part of a special program to do this. And in any given semester, between three and a half and 7% of our students are, um, in some sort of dual enrollment. Um, and we have, um, formal programs as well where we have dual enrollment agreements. And these could include what could be called regular dual enrollment, such as our early college program and the newer C caps. And on the board agenda tonight is a first reading or public comments reading of three C cap agreements that Irvine Valley College is renewing or seeking to renew this year. A C cap is a college and career access pathway. These, um, became part of the repertoire of dual enrollment, um, about two, three years ago when AB 288 was passed at the state level. So, um, Irvine Valley College has, um, early college programs in place. Um, one of them just phased out at El Toro High School, but we still have one in place at Beckman High. We have many other regular dual enrollment programs, such as the IOSD College Readiness Pilot and, um, the Math Readiness, um, Program and others, uh, the IOSD Summer College Program as well. And then as far as our C cap programs go, we have, um, programs with Dana Hills High School, which we, um, worked across district and with our sister college Saddleback, with their agreement entered into that for biotechnology. We, um, have the So we are now branching off to include the business entrepreneurship courses at Northwood High School in the Irvine Unified School District. And we have added, um, additional courses, um, that were part of regular dual enrollment before, such as our kinesiology classes at Beckman High School. And we have also added, um, some other courses that while not yet formally, uh, negotiated in terms of when and how they will be offered, we want over the next two years to be able to offer them, um, as part of C caps. And one of the great things about C caps is that they do allow us to offer courses, um, at the high school campus during the regular bell schedule and we can save seats for students. And that's a, a big advantage for high schools because they don't always want their students to be enrolled with, um, other college students if, if, if a class is on the high school campus in the middle of the day. Um, for, um, our regular dual enrollment, such as the early college program, we offer those classes typically, um, before, um, in the first period or, or zero period, um, before school starts. So the open enrollment nature of those classes doesn't interfere as much with the high school, um, day. What you see here is, um, just an overview of the different sorts of dual enrollment programs that Irvine Valley College has, um, both individualized programs, C caps and the early college pathway. So, um, in terms of, um, the success rates for these programs, um, they've proven to be very successful. Um, in early college, um, since the program began several years ago, we've had more than 525 participants. Um, almost everybody who enters that program completes the program, which means that they earn an IGSI certificate. The IGSI certificate is a transfer certificate. It assures that the student is transfer-ready for the Cal States and the UCs. Um, it is nine units shy of an AA degree. Um, in addition to that, most of these students also earn the AA. They take nine additional units on their own to complete the AA. Um, in our C caps, since we started those, um, two years ago, we have had more than 450 participants and they have earned 51 certificates. So, um, that's a lot of completers and it, so these are very successful programs, very successful pathways that we have developed. And I will say that, um, in terms of state initiatives, AB 705 guided pathways, um, these are the kinds of programs that the colleges are being encouraged to develop. Um, the strong workforce, um, has just announced allocating money to encourage more C cap-like pathways, more of bigger and deeper relationship with the K through 12s, especially as it pertains to career technical education. Um, we have, um, as well, AB 705 encouraging, um, quicker completion at college-level placement. Now, the initial impetus for this report was a question specifically about how AB 705 impacts the Irvine Valley College early college program. And the answer to that is it impacts that program in the same way that it would impact any other student on campus. Um, of all of our dual enrollment, it is only in the early college program that we do placement. Um, the other, um, dual enrollment programs are more limited, career tech-oriented, certificate-oriented, you know, they're shorter and they don't involve English, math or ESL placements. But the early college program does. And so the quick answer to it is really, it is, we will be placing students in English and math in the early college program in the exact same way that they're placed across our campus and for any of our classes. So, um, all of what you just heard applies to the early college program as well. So that is a change, um, but, um, it's a good change and it will, it'll positively impact all of those students in terms of their completion. There are times when our early college participants have not, um, passed a, a writing assessment. And there was one time when a student, uh, sibling students did not have equal assessment scores and had to take their courses in different places. So that will be a thing of the past, um, based on these new, um, systems. So I'm looking forward to that, these new placement processes. So dual enrollment, um, I helped facilitate it. Arlene Elsewoud as dean of enrollment services helps immensely with this, as does Elizabeth Cipris, our dean of counseling. Robert Melendez, um, our, um, chair of counseling are all very, um, key people in making these programs work smoothly, um, at the campus. And at that, um, it's a fairly short report, but I'd like to open it up to questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy, for that. Trustee Prendergast.
Yes, thank you. I, I did request this, um, to find out that, that correlation to, uh, trustee Wright's report. So thank you very much for that. I do have one concern in that, um, and this is primarily why I requested the report. So you're talking about using different multiple measures, just like the 705 asked for, except the issue is, is early college kids are coming in as freshmen. They don't have a high school transcript yet. It's a middle school transcript. And so, uh, I know that the placement test is gone, so my assumption then is, is we're going to be using their middle school GPA. But I also know that we used to have, uh, a recommendation process as part of that from their, uh, teachers at the middle school level. And it, it used to be that it could be any teacher, not just an English teacher or math teacher. But I'm just curious if we're changing any of that at all to kind of make that adjustment from going away from the placement test.
Um, that's an excellent question. Um, with the early college, um, what you're describing is the placement into a cohort that participates in early college and that's actually distinct from our placement into writing one, um, or a specific math class such as math 10 or psych 10. Um, so those placement tests for math and English typically take place, um, and Arlene, you can correct me if I get this wrong, but I think they're taking place in their junior year for the Beckman High School cohort because they were different for El Toro and Beckman. But I believe, um, it's in the junior year because they take their writing in their senior year. So in that case, they would have a high school record and so the typical multiple measures in AB 705 protocols could be followed with that group as they get placed into our college writing and math classes.
Okay. Cause, cause I know before they had to do the assessment to get into the cohort before, like in the summer before they started as part of the acceptance into the program.
Correct. At this point, we do not have any plans to change that because that's part of, um, assessing the student's readiness to take on the rigors of an early college program when they begin ninth grade.
So that will remain.
So I believe we will be continuing to make sure that their writing and other, you know, and their GPA and their writing is up to snuff.
Junior year as well goes away. Okay.
Yeah, to get into the cohort. But in terms of qualifying to take a college-level writing or, you know, a certain math class, we will be using the multiple measures AB 705 placement protocols.
Which seems pretty fair to say that if they're still in the early college program, it's because they maintain the GPA to be well enough placed for the math 10.
Yes. And if somebody didn't, then the only change I could envision would be we would have to consider bringing the core requisite model possibly into the early college repertoire of classes. Um, that might be necessary. Um, or that might be, you know, some option if, if some students, you know, seem to be struggling by the time they're juniors.
Yeah, that would be tough with the time crunch they're in for classes.
Yes. But generally speaking, um, I think if you take a look at the typical GPAs of our early college cohort, they would qualify for writing one placement.
And the math.
And math 10.
My other question is, so it, it looks like, based on our agenda this evening and, and the conversations that are happening statewide and, and as well as in, within the district and the colleges, this is going to grow. And that's a good thing. The question then being though is funding, because these students don't pay the $46 a unit. It's essentially a free education at the college level, which is, I mean, it goes with college promise. It goes with a whole lot of great benefits for it. But obviously at some point, this is coming out of the college's budget versus out of a different fund. I'm just curious how we're potentially looking at funding the growth.
So there's different ways to fund expansion in this area. I mean, first of all, we do get FTES or apportionment for our C cap and our early call of our dual enrollment students. As long as we are compliant with, um, open enrollment and AB 288 guidelines, then we do collect apportionment for our students. And one way to look at it is this is apportionment that we may not otherwise capture. You know, we are reaching students while they're still in high school. Um, if we wait, they may move on to a four-year school and not touch IVC or Saddleback College. So in many ways, we are capturing, um, students at an early stage that we may not otherwise capture. So that's one answer to that. Um, in some cases, um, the high schools have some money, um, to help, to encourage, um, dual enrollment pathways, um, college and career access pathways. And so in the case, for example, of our Irvine Unified School District College Readiness Pilot, um, the IUSD actually utilized some of their grant money for college readiness, this block grant, to help fund, um, some experimental college readiness classes, um, you know, as a trial run to see how well that would work. And so some of this is funded, you know, from outside sources. Um, and then the state has also allocated quite a bit of strong workforce money with the idea of encouraging many, many more pathways that would feed into our guided pathways initiative that would be, um, career-oriented, certificate-oriented, um, perhaps stackable certificates, but, um, basically oriented more toward career education.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes. Uh, thank you for your presentation, uh, Tracy. Um, one of the things that I was curious about that you started to touch on in answering trustee Prendergast's, um, question was I know that one of the, um, conditions that we have to, um, certify in these agreements that we're signing is that the community college at the partnering high school doesn't reduce access to the same course offered at our community college and that if a course is, uh, oversubscribed at the community college, it wouldn't be offered. And I'm just wondering from a practical standpoint, how that plays out, uh, in these types of courses? Do we offer those courses? Obviously not at the same time, but some other time. What, what kinds of enrollments are we seeing in those courses, et cetera, et cetera?
Excellent question. That is, uh, one of the areas of compliance with, um, AB 288 and the C cap agreements that requires a lot of monitoring, um, on the part of the college. So, um, Arlene and I, um, and our scheduling and enrollment planning analyst, um, we monitor this consistently. Um, if a course, um, we offer in a C cap agreement, um, does not have a counterpart, it can't, we can't offer it unless there is a counterpart open course on campus. So that's the first prerequisite there. We must do that. Um, we do that and then we must monitor enrollments. If the course on campus fills to where there is no longer access, or if a waitlist emerges, then we must offer another section. So we have to just carefully monitor to make sure that oversubscription means that there's no seats left or as the law says, there's a waiting list. So we have to be careful to make sure that even if a waiting list emerges on one section with a couple of students in it, that we offer another section with plenty of open seats.
So from a practical standpoint, how does that, um, play out with these courses that we're offering?
From a practical standpoint, um, we first of all have to look ahead and schedule in that fashion. Um, it does mean that one could, and the law does not require us to run a low-enrolled section. It just requires us to offer sections and seats. If in our judgment, that section is low-enrolled and could negatively impact college efficiencies, we do have a right to cancel the section. So in practical terms, yes, if the section that we have offered to prevent oversubscription remains very low-enrolled, we can cancel that course. And we have done so. But we do have to have access and give people plenty of opportunity for that access.
Okay. All right. I don't think we have any further questions, Tracy. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any polls from the agenda? Wow. We have no request for polls. So do we have a motion to move the, all of the consent items? A motion trustee Wright, a second from trustee Milchker. Any other discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. The consent calendar is approved by a sixty-year, six to zero trustee yes vote, one, I don't need to announce this, trustee absent, and a student advisory, student trustee yes vote. Now moving forward to the general action item, 6.1, amendment to the annual approval for student trustee to receive compensation make and second motions. We have a motion from trustee Milchker and a second from trustee Wright and a question from trustee Lang.
Yes, I know I had some questions about these items from the, uh, of the chancellor. And so I wonder if maybe we ought to, um, have a, um, discuss both 6.1 and 6.2 in conjunction with each other and to better understand what, where we're going with this or, or who wants to lead that discussion.
Are you asking the chancellor to respond?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So in August of 2017, the board met and approved a 5% raise, uh, which is allowable within the law. You'd not raised the board compensation for, since 2013, so four years had passed. And when you made that approval, you put a time limit on it. And so you approved the increase in both the student trustee compensation and your own compensation for one year. So it sunsets this month. So in order for you to receive the compensation moving forward that the student trustee received last year, which is the 393.75 per month, and for you as the elected board members to receive the compensation that you received last year, which is in 6.2, at 787.50 per month, you have to approve 6.1 and 6.2 tonight. Otherwise, you will revert back to the prior compensation levels for both the student trustee and yourself.
Okay. Yeah, I had some questions on these items, but glad you asked them.
Okay. But that, that really doesn't necessarily fix the problem going forward completely, correct?
So what we would do in making the approval tonight is not sunset it. So it would continue to be, to be paid at the rates that you approved last year if and until you choose to raise it again.
Or lower it.
Or lower it.
Change it.
Or lower it.
To change it.
Change it.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Trustee, oh, I thought you had a question.
No, I was just clarifying that it's not going up another 5%.
No. It's staying where, correct.
It might have to be voted on every year.
Oh, you're right.
All right. Okay. I see no other questions on 6.1, so let's go ahead and vote.
The item carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Moving on to 6.2 related to board member compensation. We have a motion from trustee Wright, a second from trustee J. Do we have any additional questions on this? Clarifications? Guess not. So let's vote. Oh, one second. Just trustee Prendergast.
Kind of joking. So since Terry's not here, she doesn't get it?
Ah, you're funny. All right. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.3, acceptance of the grant for the Saddleback College Innovation and Effectiveness Grant Agreement. Motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee J. Any discussions? Discussion, I should say. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.4, regional strong workforce participation revised agreement between Rancho, Santiago and our district. We have a motion trustee Lang, a second from trustee Milchker. Um, I don't, I don't have any public questions right now. I, I did have a chance to look at this yesterday. I found that some of the work just seemed vague, the proposed scope of work. So maybe chancellor, if I can follow up with you on that, just to get some... So maybe Chancellor, if I can follow up with you on that, just to get some clarifications. But seeing no other questions, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Oh, it's this one that I had questions on, six point five. So, not six point four. Six point five, another revised strong workforce participation agreement. We have a motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee J. Any questions on this? Okay, let's vote. The motion carries by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point six, another regional strong workforce participation agreements between Rancho and our district, round two, year one and year two funds for IVC. Motion from trustee J and a second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries unanimously and by trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Six point seven, regional strong workforce participation agreement, again, between Rancho and our district and year one and year two related to Saddleback College. Motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. Student trustee. Six point eight, another agreement, strong workforce between Rancho and our district, round two, year one and year two for Saddleback College CTE projects. A motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee J. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point nine, dual enrollment. Irvine Valley College and Irvine Unified School District College and Career Access Pathways Partnership Agreement from 2018 to 2020. Motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee J. And I guess, does this, I just, my question, maybe I didn't read it thoroughly. This, this only applies to one IUSD school or does it apply to all of them? Just one? Is there any reason why we wouldn't do something with all of them or?
Can I, can I answer that?
Sure.
I'm sorry, it applies to all of them. I mean, we have specific programs at Northwood High School, but there, there's a list of courses in the appendix that have been requested by Woodbridge High School, University High and others.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. And the same would apply for others as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Let's see, no other questions, let's vote. Six point nine carries by unanimous trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. Six point one zero, this is dual enrollment relating to IVC and Capistrano Unified School District, which is right next to us. So let's, we have a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Wright. Any other, any questions on this item?
President Jamal, may I speak? Dan Walsh down here at head.
Where are you?
Sorry about that. This one, I wanted to clarify that the capo one does apply to one school and one school only.
And that's capo unified?
That's correct. It relates to.
I mean, capo high school.
It relates to a specific program at a specific school that our college was given first right of refusal on that program because it is within, obviously it's close to Saddleback College. And so just wanted to clarify that for this one. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. All right. Any other questions? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one one, dual enrollment Irvine Valley College and Tustin Unified School District and College and Career Access Pathways Partnership Project 2018-2020. A motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee J. Any questions or clarifications? Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one two, this is the City of Irvine Education Partnership Fund Grant Agreement with the Irvine Valley College Foundation. And we have a motion from trustee J, a second from trustee Wright. I had, just had a question now. I know this is a result of a ballot measure that passed in Irvine, I think, two or three years ago. Is this our, our third year of funding from them or do you know?
I believe this will be our fourth year. So it's been renewed for another three. And this is the first of three.
Okay, very good.
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? No, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries, six to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory, student trustee yes vote. Six point one three, a new agreement for legislative advocacy services with strategic education services from a couple of days from now through, so this is a two-year agreement, it looks like, between now and July first, July 31st, 2020. We have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Prendergast and a question from trustee Lang.
Yes, the question that I had was, I was a little concerned about, frankly, I guess, the lack of board input to get to this point. Obviously legislative advocacy is an important aspect, I think, of what we do. And, you know, just don't have enough information here to understand what the process was that we went through, how we selected this firm from among other firms, whether they will be a good advocate for us on basic aid and other important issues to this district and so forth. So I, I had some concerns about this.
Fair questions asked. I, I know, I know you have a question, TJ, but I thought it was my lap, my iPad. I couldn't open Exhibit A and I still can't open it. So I thought that was addressed, might have addressed your questions. I guess it didn't talk about.
Not, not to my satisfaction.
Oh, okay. So who was in, who can speak to this?
So I'm going to ask Vice Chancellor Gable to address this matter.
Thank you. So you may recall at the last board meeting, President Jamal, that you asked us to go out for an RFP for the services. So that was something that we did during the month of July. We solicited seven different firms that are known throughout the state of California to provide these services. Three firms responded to the RFP and the proposals were evaluated by three different management team members and given a ranking. And so the firm that we're bringing forward tonight, Strategic Education Services, received the highest ranking amongst all three of the individuals that looked at it. And they are also the lowest cost that was provided within the RFPs. And so that's where the recommendation is coming from.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I don't, I don't know this group. I would say that the cost is highly competitive, what the bid you got. So if they are going to provide the services we desire, that's a, that's a good cost for these kinds of services.
Yeah, I think they are a very reputable firm. I have worked with them in the past and they, I would say they mold their services to the districts more so. It's not really cookie cutter. And so they are out looking for the best interest of the districts that they are working for. They also had good recommendations. LA Community College District works with them. The chancellor's office works with them. And Santa Monica Community College District works with them. So the references came through very well for them as well.
Okay, very good. Trustee Prendergast.
Yes, kind of goes along, same idea, the concept. I mean, not to micromanage it, but it would have been nice to have a little bit of input or a little bit of like forward information as what the options were. Because I know the request came not, not just because of money, but because of the type of service. And I know we had issues with the previous group also representing other colleges that were trying to get rid of basic aid in, in their legislative advocacy. And kind of curious whether this group has any of those clients as well. So just, I mean, it's, I'm still voting yes on it. I just curious as if there may be a, because of our involvement in this and its impact on this district, it would have maybe have been nice to have the president or somebody in part of the committee, I guess. I don't know, or if that's inappropriate, but it just, it is a definite.
Other public agencies.
It is a definite, different animal than some of the other things we deal with. And that's just our, my, I think, trustee Lang, my concern. But again, I'm still planning on voting yes on it.
So you're not aware of any conflicts, like significant, or well, conflicts that they may, that may arise like trustee Prendergast just alluded to?
I am not aware of any, no.
Okay. And I think to his point, and maybe trustee Lang's as well, I mean, yes, there are other districts and I think other public agencies do involve the elected officials or a subcommittee in the hiring of, of lobbying services. Our, our district doesn't have a history of doing that, but it's also not inappropriate to have some kind of role in that process. All right. So thank you for answering that. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one four, district-wide mapping project, underground utility mapping and condition assessment services, Carthy Building Companies. We have a motion from trustee Milchiker. And we don't yet have a second. A second from trustee Wright. Do we have any questions? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one five, district-wide mapping project, construction management services. Different company. A motion from trustee J. And a second from trustee Prendergast. Any questions on six point one five? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one six, agreement for software development services, NUDSEC. Approve the work order with NUDSEC for an amount not to exceed 1.288 million, 400,000 for the term August 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019. We have a motion from trustee Lang, a second from trustee Wright and a question from trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just, in the tech world, and maybe you can answer this. I, I'm hoping that we're not getting locked into something where they're so ingrained into our system that we can't ever use another organization if there's a different bid amount or anything like that. Like, I'm not saying that they're a bad company. I'm not saying that we've had problems. But I also don't want to get in a position where they can throw out any amount we want, they want, and we kind of have to take it because it would be too hard to switch. I guess, just to alleviate that concern.
True. Years ago, we migrated for that very reason to a pool of nine different consultancies, but they are arranged by size. So in 2014, we went out for the large-scale managed services providers and there are fewer firms can provide that level. And NUDSEC won that. So for the term, for the five years, every time that we assign them work in a contract, it comes back to you a separate thing. But they have performed well, so they are not ingrained in the system. We have other people as well, but they are a valued resource because they can work at a level that many of the other consultancies cannot. So in this, they're really doing four things for us in this contract. Every year, we have people at the colleges that prioritize the list of things that they would like added to this. So NUDSEC does that work. They also do work that is mandated for which we have no choice. And a good example of that, you saw a presentation on AB 705. That demands some changes in our student information system and we're working closely with the colleges to do that. In addition, we have kind of a happy thing. Well, we have so many people using our systems to load on them as such that we're starting to worry about performance. So we're looking at two different strategies there. And so as part of this contract, NUDSEC will be helping us optimize some of the performance of those systems. Another strategy, the longer-term strategy we're using is to migrate out to cloud services, which are much more elastic and versatile. So SmartSchedule is the first system that we've architected from the ground up in Amazon Web Service. And it's our bellwether for being able to use that kind of elastic services in the future. And the last thing that they're going to work on is when you look at, about half our students register on their phones, but that is not an end-to-end experience. There are still holes in it. And so what we're trying to do here is to, is to go through and business process, re-engineer just the registration so that it can be end-to-end on mobile phones. So that's what they're doing for us. But your concern, I think, was voiced also about four or five years ago. And that's when we made the major move from one large consultancy to nine different ones.
Very good question. All right. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote. A motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're off to, we're on to six point one seven, district agreement with DSA Resident Inspector Services, TODS Inspection Services. We have a motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee J. I know I had a question on this item with, which I think was answered by the chancellor today. Do any other, any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one eight, Resolution 18-17, Declaration of an Emergency Situation Regarding the Collapse of an Evaporation Cooler Unit at Saddleback College and the Contract with, is it Envise? Envise. Motion from trustee J and a second from trustee Wright and a question from trustee Lang.
Yes, and I'll, I, I don't know who the best person to answer this question would be, but this sort of highlighted for me the maybe need to do better internal inspection to identify those things that maybe are likely to blow up to maybe try and avoid some of these emergencies in the future. And.
Is it you to address this question to? Or?
Or Brandy or who?
Yeah, it's Saddleback really, but I think that is a very good point. And there were, both of the campuses are working on their scheduled maintenance programs and, and looking at those in more detail. And so I think this is something that was older, you know, and it, and it came about and needs to be done on an emergency situation, which is really rare. You know, we do have a lot of systems on both campuses. And, you know, ultimately, everything will break down at some point in time, but putting in the scheduled maintenance and preventative maintenance processes will help alleviate that. And both of the campuses are working on that.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one nine, this is the 2020 to 2021 five-year construction plan to be submitted to the state chancellor's office and approve the changes to the five-year construction plan. We have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee J. And we'll start off with the question from trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I assume this is the obvious question. What, we got a revised page, but the revision wasn't marked differently. So we have to sit here and try and read it with this little tiny print, figure out what changed. So it'd be easier if someone just kind of pointed that out or highlighted it and read in the future.
Yes, and we apologize for not highlighting that. I did notice that myself as I was walking down here. But we needed to make changes to the 2018 project budgets. So we didn't change any of the priority orders or any of the projects, but we needed to get the project budgets more up to date and in agreement with what they are at this point in time. So the changes that we made were to the Gateway Building. So that's priority number eight, 2018, priority number eight. We changed 2018 priority number 10, the Fine Arts Building. And then priority number 12, B 300 renovation. 12, B 300 renovation, priority 13, the SM Building renovation, priority 14, the TAS renovation, and then priorities 15 and 16, the new ATEP building and the Student Services renovations. As we were reviewing the five-year plan in detail, it was determined that many of these budgets were not up to the current costs that were going to be there, and so we needed to make sure that we had a more accurate budget. As we all know, these budgets will change as we get closer to doing them, but this is the budgets for these projects that we project at this point in time.
All right. Thank you for that. Trustee Wright.
The one concern that I have are with these, two of these buildings. One is the Science Math Building renovation and the Task renovation. What if we decide that both of these are going to have to be, they can't be renovated? Because I worry about the Science Math Building.
So we're currently under, or we've started a contract for a structural analysis of both of those buildings. If the structural analysis comes back that it would be too costly, I mean, you can renovate anything, really.
Yeah.
It's just how much is it going to cost you? So depending upon what the structural analysis comes back, we'll make that decision on if it's going to be a tear-down and replace, if it's just going to be a tear-down completely and not replace, or what we want to do moving forward. So it's still out there. We wanted to do an IPP on both of these projects, so, just so that we could get in the queue for potential state funding moving forward. So that's kind of why you see we have actually four IPPs that are being submitted this year, the B 300 at IVC, and then there's three for Saddleback Colleges, the Student Services Building, the SM Building, and the TAS renovation. If these are selected and approved by the state, then next year, we would be submitting formal FPPs, which are final project proposals, on these, but we would only be allowed to be funded for one of them at Saddleback. And so we would have to make the decision at that time which one is the highest priority to get the state funding, and then we may have to forego state funding on the other ones depending upon the timelines.
Because.
But this gets us in the queue for potential state funding.
Yeah. At one time, it was suggested that we take, you know, the math-science building has to be, you know, destroyed, that we could use the Student Service Center if they get the Gateway Building and use math and put math and computer science there, so.
It's all being worked out.
Okay.
And I think that the more exciting thing is in the spring, we're going to start a new facilities master plan.
Good.
And so we'll really be looking at all of our programming, where it all needs to be, and kind of doing a new facilities master plan and laying everything out fiscal year by fiscal year of what we want to be under design or construction at any given time.
Okay. Go ahead, trustee Milchiker.
Don't we do an academic master plan before we do the facilities master plan?
We do, and that's going to start up in the fall.
Okay, great.
And then about six months later, or about four months later, then we'll start the facilities master plan. So they will feed upon each other.
Excellent idea, and it's good to do the master plan prior to, it's good to do it now, anyway, prior to putting any buildings down. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So we have, I think, no further questions. We have a motion and a second, so let's go ahead and vote on 6.19. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We have 6.20 These are the board policy revisions that were for review and study at the last board meeting and now up for approval today. Motion trustee Wright, a second from trustee Prendergast. I couldn't open either of these attachments, but I know I was able to comment on them, and I trust that what we had exchanged with each other electronically, that the changes are in there.
Yes, so.
Except for the one.
Right. So with these, the changes that were made by the board between the last meeting and the current meeting are highlighted in yellow. So for those of you that could open the attachment, you'll see those changes, but yes, trustee Jamal, we did incorporate the changes as we discussed, and you discussed with Dr. Burke as well.
Okay, thank you. We do have a couple of questions. Student trustee Huang.
Hi, I had a question about Board Policy 2125. It states that at the very last sentence, it's talking about firearms and weapons and how they're prohibited on campus, except for, except for district officials that are authorized by chief campus of police. But then it goes on to say that the revision says that the requirement doesn't apply to duly-appointed peace officers, and at the very bottom sentence, it says, what is it? Peace officers, honorably retired police officers, and full-time paid peace officers, as well as military and such, are encouraged to report their presence to chief police as opposed to not mandatory. And I was wondering as to why it's not mandatory instead of encouraged.
We aren't allowed to make it mandatory. They have a right as the service that they performed and what they're retired from, so they have that right automatically, and we cannot require it either by penal code or Business and Professions Code. So that's why we're encouraging them to do so, but if they really don't want to, they don't have to. Most of them will, just out of courtesy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Wright.
I noticed on the first board policy, the one dealing with board policy and administrative regulations, it says here that you, we may want to establish a board of trustees, board policy subcommittee. Have we ever thought about doing that, or is?
Do you want me to respond?
Yeah, I think we could. I mean, that's really up to us, and it's.
Right.
It's something that, should we want to do it, we could have three of us serve on a board policy subcommittee. So it's there.
Okay.
It's available to us should we decide to.
Sure.
To create one.
Right. And my last comment is with the last two board policies. One is 1300, and the other one is 8,000. It looks like they're the same, but it says, under the 8,000, it says, delete new board policy, board policy 1300 speech. I haven't seen.
So we renumbered. 8,000 used to stand alone, and we basically have renumbered it to 1300.
Right.
But in order to make sure that 8,000 goes away, we have to delete it. There is some new wording in 1300, and this all was vetted with our legal counsel, as well as lengthy discussions at our B Part Committee.
Why does it say here, the new board policy, 8,000 speech should be deleted?
Well, 8,000 is our existing.
Right.
Board policy, so we're deleting that one and we're creating 1300.
Okay. But it says here, it says here, delete new board policy.
Well, I think it's meaning to delete 8,000 because we have a new board policy 1300 that's replacing it, is what that's supposed to be conveying.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Looks like we've completed our questions on the board policy revisions. Let's go ahead and vote. The changes are approved by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.21 Academic Employee and Classified Administrator Personnel Actions.
Board President.
Yes.
May I point out to the board, in accordance with our legal obligation, there is one administrative employment contract under this item. It is for a temporary assignment, not to exceed 960 hours of an interim position. The interim dean of Economic and Workforce Development, that is for Debbie Van Schulent, and to point out to the board, her Range 22 Step 1, an annual salary of 144, 396, plus a mileage stipend for the time that she'll be in this interim position while we fly the vacancy.
Okay. Thank you for that. We have motion from trustee Milchiker, a second from trustee Prendergast. Any questions?
Let's see.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. 6.21 is approved by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.22 Faculty Conversion Canvas One-Time Stipends. Separated this item out, I think, a couple meetings ago. I have motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee Jay, and a question from trustee Prendergast.
It's just a statement. Thank you again for showing the new total that I requested at the last meeting. That really does help a lot to see how we are progressing on that, so I really do appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Seeing no further questions, let's vote. The motion carries by five to one trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.23 Classified Personnel Actions. No changes? All right. Motion from trustee Milchiker and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. And the motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now completed our general action items. Move on to our reports. 7.1 Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Guided Pathways Initiative. If there's any.
It's a written report.
It's a written report. If there's any questions, I suggest we read the report. 7.2 Saddleback College and IVC Speakers, a listing of speakers at both colleges. 7.3 Staff Response to Public Comments from the Previous Board Meeting. 7.4 Facilities Plan Status Report, Status of Current Construction Projects, and then 7.5 Retiree OPEC Trust Fund. Okay, moving on to reports from our administration and governance groups, and we'll start with the Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Thank you. Blake Stevens couldn't make it tonight. He has a class during this time, and so I'm standing in for him, but I have no report.
All right. Thank you very much. And we have an old face that's come back, or a fresh face, however you want to. I didn't mean it that way. An old friend who's come back.
Just when you thought it was safe to go back in the water.
Didn't come out right.
It hasn't been fresh for a long time. I'm sitting in for Kurt Meyer. He couldn't be here this evening, and we have nothing to report as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Ivy, then next up is IVC Academic Senate.
I have a report. IVC's Academic Senate would like to acknowledge the hard work of IVC professors Chris Lefler and Diana Hurlbut for all their efforts serving as curriculum chairs. IVC has a new curriculum chair, Professor Rick Boone. IVC Academic Senate would also like to thank VPI, Saddleback VPI, Vo Kumamoto, for her time and thought shared with IVC and Saddleback faculty at the Curriculum Institute in Riverside in July. IVC faculty look forward to working collaboratively with Saddleback on curriculum, a critical part of what faculty do. Finally, I would like to congratulate the college student government presidents, Matt and Perry, and the student trustee Evelyn for paving the way for new collaborations regarding homelessness and food insecurity affecting both campuses. These are critical and important issues that IVC Academic Senate looks forward to working together with you all on this. And finally, I recently served on two facilities-related district hiring committees, and I want to thank Brandy Delena for tolerating a construction neophyte on her hiring committees. I know everything about design-build and design-bid-build, but I also want to report that these hiring committees had amazing applicants. They were, they were well-run, and it was interesting to see that part of the district and how it functions that faculty never get to see, so I really enjoyed it. Thank you, Brandy.
Very good. Thank you for that. Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services.
I'd like to welcome Dr. Burke, and as the chair of the committee, the hiring committee, to thank Susan Kwan in HR, Don Main in my office, and the members of that hiring committee for their excellent work, several of whom are in the room. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you for that. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
Yes, welcome, Dr. Burke. It seems like you've been here a while now, that it's like the 30th of July, so welcome formally. Couple of things from Human Resources. First, I know you thought the day would never come, but Human Resources is now fully staffed on the management side. Thank you for approving tonight. The employee-employee relations manager, her name is Karen Dubert. She hails from Cal Poly Pomona, was their chief investigator on the student and workplace side. She also is an attorney, and we're very excited. In the fall, we plan to house her at Irvine Valley College to provide some extra support on employee relations for Irvine Valley College, and we want to thank Dr. Rockmore for the area he's setting up for Human Resources over at Irvine Valley. Separate from that, we did roll out management training that was mandatory this month. We'll finish it toward the end of the summer, but we want to ensure that HR is supporting our management team in addressing issues that they're dealing with and helping support them make good decisions on the performance improvement side. And so far, that that management training has been very well-received for our, by our management team, and I want to thank the Human Resources staff for helping me to repair that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
Thank you. I want to put a shout out to Kim McCord and her team. She successfully closed our books this past weekend and was kind of a rocky road this year. She was down about three staff, and so it's always very difficult to try to close the books when you're short-staffed, and also she had some new staff, too. So great job on that. That's a huge accomplishment for all of us, and now she is busy trying to finalize our adopted budget, which we will bring back to the board at the next meeting for your review and approval, hopefully. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, and it looks like you're going to conclude the reporting for tonight, the IVC Classified Senate.
I guess I am. On behalf of the IVC Classified Senate, I wanted to welcome Dr. Burke to the district. Let's see, so over the summer, we've just been kind of getting organized and ready for the new year, doing our committee assignments and our meeting schedule. And we also were brainstorming on ways to increase classified participation in our campus governance system, so we have a couple of new projects that we're going to be working on, like different welcome packets for students, I mean, for new employees coming in, and we also held an informational session for those who are interested in serving on committees so we can answer any questions and kind of give them an overview of expectations, things like that. So other than that, during flex week for our general meeting, it's going to be a little different this year. We're actually going to have it in the late afternoon to try to include some of the night shift people, too, so that we can kind of open it up to everybody, and that's about it.
Thank you for that, and I think I'm turning over the adjournment to trustee Prendergast.
Yes, thank you. So in memoriam, we would like to close this evening's meeting in memory of President Tim Jamal's mother, Lily Mae Jamal, who passed away on July 23rd. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, faculty, and staff, we would like to extend our condolences to President Jamal and his family. President Jamal, please know that our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family during this difficult time.
Thank you for that. Meeting is adjourned.